We'll go ahead and officially call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. And we'll start with roll call. We'll start with my board colleagues to the right. And when we get to the new board members, if you can just take a moment to introduce yourselves to everyone, everyone may not be familiar, so it's a good opportunity to introduce yourself to the community.
Welcome, everyone. I'm Lauren Christensen.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Keough. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Happy New Year. I'm Anupam Chiksedu. Thanks for being here.
I'm Judy Westra. I'm a new board member that was elected in November, and this is my first board meeting. I have two children in the district, or I'm sorry, I have one that graduated in 2021 and one that is still in Plymouth High School at the STEM Academy. And I'm excited to be on the board and to serve the community. Thank you for being here.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Picard, and I also am, this is my first board meeting, and I have lived in the district about 36 years and had four children go through the district. And they have all graduated, attended college, and are married and in their jobs. And I just ran, so I want to help serve. Awesome. Thank you.
Patty McCoyn, thanks for being here tonight. Happy New Year.
Great. And before we introduce Superintendent Merritt, if you can just help me welcome our new board members to the board. Superintendent Merritt?
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my executive assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson, and thank her for being here this evening to take our minutes for our community and just for the record. And have the remaining members of the core team to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Hello, everyone. Nick Brandon, Executive Director, Communications and Marketing. Welcome.
Good evening. Curtis Kowitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services.
Hi, I'm WPS. I'm a Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening. Beth Raell, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thanks for being here.
Good evening. Happy New Year. Chantae Langford, Chief Human Resource Officer.
You're welcome, everyone. Please join me with the, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First piece of business is the adoption of Agenda Approval of Consent Agenda, Action Item 230138.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the, I'm sorry, that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda, Action Item 230138.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Merritt, will you walk us through?
Yes. This evening, the human, I'm sorry, the consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. The HR department has been busy, busy hiring champions, and we have some for your consideration this evening. We also have leaves and resignations, as well as the approval of minutes from our regular meeting that was on December 13th, 2022, and the final reading of Policy 9150 that is about school visitors.
Any questions or comments? All right, so moved by Member Keough, seconded by Secretary Sedu. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, passes seven zero. All right, Dr. Merritt, do you want to, or I'm sorry, turn it over to Ms. Langford.
All right. Thank you, President Wilson. We have three new hires for your consideration this evening. The first that I have is Dante Dorsey. Dante is being hired as the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Climate and Culture Specialist. He has his bachelor's degree from U of M and his master's from EMU. Some of you may be familiar with Dante as he was hired in the spring of last year as the Dean of Students for East Middle Schools. So he's transitioning into a new role. So welcome, Dante.
Welcome.
All right. And next, we have Sneha Amadi. Hi, Sneha. Sneha will be our new Director of Finance and Accounting. She has her bachelor's degree, which she obtained in New Delhi, India. She also has her MSBO Business Office Manager Certification, and she's coming to us from Southfield Schools. So welcome. And last but not least, I have Mr. Patrick Garvey. Patrick is coming to us as a computer technician. He has his certification in hard disk drive and network service support, and he had undergraduate studies at Schoolcraft. Welcome, Mr. Garvey. And then that concludes the consent agenda section for human resources.
Fantastic. Welcome, everyone. All right, on to celebrating success. And today, it's going to be Member Christensen.
It's my honor to do so today. So celebrating success this evening will honor Ms. Kimberly May, PCCS Director of State and Federal Programs, for her recent accomplishment of being selected as a Michigan 2023 National Association of Federal Education Program Administrators State Leadership Award winner. Each year, the Michigan Association of State and Federal Program Specialists solicits nominations from its membership to seek out up to three candidates to receive this award. Candidates must remember, must be a member of the association, as well as provide leadership to Michigan districts in regards to federal program administration. Ms. May regularly goes the extra mile to be a strong advocate for our students and families at PCCS. We are proud to have staff members like Kimberly May, who are focused on the well-being and the success of our PCCS community, and making sure all students have what they need to learn, prepare, and thrive. I would like to invite Beth Raell, our Chief Academic Officer, to the podium to share more about the important work Kimberly May does for our school community.
Thank you. We're proud to have Kimberly May as an honored member of our teaching and learning team. Many who serve in a state and federal programs role across the state and nationwide take a logistical approach to this work. We recognize and appreciate that Kimberly goes over and above every day in her professional practice to humanize these services. Rather than implementing programs based only on compliance and reporting, Kimberly focuses on the needs of each student and their family. One example of her student-centered focus includes breaking down multiple barriers to ensure that students who are eligible for McKinney-Bento service, students experiencing homelessness, have transportation to school every day, especially when we don't have the capacity to do that and we run out of options with local cab companies. Kimberly continues to work and work and work to ensure that our students are able to obtain their degree, their work at school. Another example took place recently when she noticed a student that was struggling to see clearly, and she ensured that that student had glasses that they were proud to wear by working, going over and above with a local optometrist to get that student glasses. Kimberly always ensures that students and their families' needs are met with discretion and dignity. She carries every student that she serves in her heart and her soul. In its essence, education is about relationships. In all that she does, Kimberly May ensures, seeks to ensure that students feel welcome, seen, and supported. As a teaching and learning team, we are extremely proud of the work that Kimberly does every day, and we are proud to help recognize her with this award.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I present Kimberly May with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Miler Award for consistently going the extra mile to support the students and families of PCCS.
Congratulations. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you. Thank you to Dr. Merritt, thank you to the board, and especially thank you to Beth Raell. Thank you for giving me the space to be me and to advocate for students, so I definitely appreciate that. I have to say, first and foremost, my work would not be as easy as maybe it seems like it is if it wasn't for my assistant, Ann Anthony. Ann has carried state and federal programs for years, and she is such a guide seeing to me, so I have to first and foremost acknowledge her and her work and her support in everything that I do. She's so kind and so patient with me and works with me when I get my ideas of what I need to do, and so that's one piece that I have to just definitely acknowledge her and thank her, along with just the team of teachers that I work with, our EL department, the staff when I work with McKinney-Bento, coming in and talking to teachers and principals. Everyone is so supportive, and they truly have a heart for kids. They're sometimes just not how to go about the support, so being able to provide that is just something that I truly, truly enjoy, and just to see the faces of our kids when they get the support, like that is, that's the best reward ever. So again, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. So that's it.
Congratulations again. Congratulations. Onto Board Committee Reports and Action. First up is the President's Report. Just a few items to go over. First, I want to thank Secretary Sedu for helping to, you know, really spearhead the Board of Education newsletter that went out towards the end of last week. I want to thank Nick for his support in that, and Dr. Merritt as well, so received some great feedback from it going out, and once again, looking forward to continuing that. So thank you, Secretary Sedu. Also, with new board members, means that currently we have a vice president position open. So just as a reminder of the processes, wanted to bring it up at this meeting to say if you're interested in filling the vice president's role, to give that some consideration at the next board meeting. Any of those who are interested can basically state their interest, and then there will need to be a nomination for that, for that position, and then the board will vote on it. Right? So once again, just putting it on the radar for the first time since this is a, we have two new members, that everyone can give consideration to that, those positions, or that position, and then on January 24th, we'll go ahead, you'll state your interest and, and receive a nomination, and then we'll vote on it. So hopefully by the next board meeting, we'll have a vice president in, in place at that time. Are there any questions on that? No? Perfect. Also, along with that, with two new board members, everyone has a copy of the Operating Principles, and this was something that we worked on as a board over a period of time, updated it, and during our orientation yesterday, I did go over with you, but, you know, this is something that the team of eight all signed, and now you should have an updated copy. I saw an updated copy, I believe, in the agenda, and so take some time to review it, and then we'll all sign it, laminate it. It's just a reminder, every time we come to the board meeting, of, of how we want these board meetings to operate and how we want to operate as a gang of, a team of eight. Any questions on that? Perfect.
I have questions.
Sure.
There's a couple concerns I just have in that to sign that, so I just, you want me to discuss that now or later?
So I think we can, if, if there's concerns, we can go ahead and put that in the discussion section at the end of the meeting, and then we can have the discussion at that time. Mascot process, so we talked about that at the last board meeting. I wasn't here, so I appreciate Member Keough filling in and kind of walking through the process, just as a reminder of the dates, and we did push the dates back a couple weeks because I was out ill, so we weren't able to finish getting the, the information to Dr. Merritt and her team to be able to get the application process open. But we will finish that. The board announced the process on the 13th. The application process will open on the 12th, so I gave an extra day. And, and then the application process will close on February 1st. The board will go through the selection process by the 14th, and the committee work will begin by the 27th, with the recommendation to the board to come no later to the board than June 6th. That's just as a reminder, once the committee is established, it has a max of 90 days to, to bring a recommendation forward to Dr. Merritt and to the board, for the board to ultimately vote on it. Anything you would add to that? Members, or?
Just, we'll be soliciting input from the community as a whole, in addition to the, the members of the families and the people that are part of the district, because it is something that will affect both our students and families that are part of the district right now, but as well as those alumni and others that are interested in this process. We're definitely going to be looking for input from people on a broad basis to support the, the work that we're doing on a name change. There is a defined policy in the work that we have to do, and we'll be using surveys and other pieces of that process to make sure that we solicit that input and that feedback as we go through that consideration.
Absolutely. All right. With that, that's the President's Report. Onto SVA with Secretary Sedu.
SVA or SPA?
I'm sorry. What did I say? SVA. Best committee always. Yeah, SPA.
Student Performance and Achievement. We did do interviews with community members in December and selected three community members to serve a two-year term starting this month. We will have a brief orientation tomorrow, and we'll have our first meeting of this calendar year on January 18th at 5:00 PM in this room.
Fantastic. Thank you. Next, Policy Committee with Member McCoyn.
So we have not had a meeting since our last board meeting. We, we did select community members to serve. We had a lot of interests, so we have four. Would have liked to take, but that was pushing it, but everybody was so qualified and so interested, and everybody brings something different to the table, so we pretty much just kind of pulled names out of the six qualified applicants. But we're very excited to get to work, and our next meeting is Tuesday, January 24th. At 5:30, we meet in the collaboration space down at the end of this hallway, and everybody is welcome to attend.
Fantastic. Thank you. FNO with Member Keough, Trustee Keough.
So the Finance and Operations Committee never sleeps. We met on Thursday, the 22nd, just before the, the snow day on the 23rd, and we went through a number of topics that will be on the agenda this evening, including the bid package awards for EL3 at Itsbister Elementary, the classroom purchase furnitures that we're doing at the elementary schools, the update on the bid package that we're doing for, for Starkweather School, a review of our stormwater management plan as part of the, the work that we're doing as a district, as well as reviewing both the custodial and transportation key performance indicators, and we'll see the custodial presentation here this evening. We also discussed the bus purchases that'll be on the agenda this evening, including the different types of fuels, including electric, diesel, propane, and, and gas as part of that process, and there's some interesting outcomes that have come out of that that will help save the district money, and we'll talk about it this evening. And lastly, we reviewed our School of Choice program, which will also be on the agenda tonight. The next FNO meeting is on Thursday, January 19th at 5:00 PM here in this room, and we welcome the community to attend.
Fantastic. Thank you. Next up is the SVA Committee Meeting, Committee, and we did meet yesterday. Here to provide an update is SVA member Josh Patton.
Hello, everyone. My name is Josh Patterson, and I'm a freshman at Plymouth and an SVA member. At yesterday's meeting, we began discussing the dynamic plan to get everyone familiar with it and its contents. We then worked on making subcommittees to move forward. We focused on topics such as establishing meeting norms, creating our student agenda, establishing the RFP, or Request for Approval Process slash Timeline regarding the consultant to aid in SVA and establishing, to aid in SVA, and then establishing the co-chair process slash timeline. Our next meeting is Monday, February 13th, 2023, at Canton High School, Room 201. For everyone who does not know, January is School, School Board Recognition and Appreciation Month, so on behalf of SVA, I would like to thank all the members of the school board who have helped guide us to where we are today. It means the world, and you're really empowering us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Appreciate you. All right. Now we have an update from the Educational Excellence Foundation with Ms. Johnson.
Thank you all. Quick but exciting update, I think. We are no longer the Educational Excellence Foundation. In the three months I've been with the foundation, we have been working on changing our name and brand. Survey results have shown that a lot of people don't know who the Educational Excellence Foundation is and who we serve. So moving forward, we are the Plymouth-Canton Educational Foundation, hopefully a little more clear as to who our constituents are, and our new logo is being launched this week. You'll see on the screen, a bit more integrated into the district and our community, so we're excited about that. After a three-year hiatus, our signature fundraising event on Corked is coming back to Fox Hills on April 14th. Oh, yay! So save the date. You'll be seeing more about that very soon. We're also doing a mini classroom grant cycle this winter, since it's been a while. So applications will open February. Our new website will launch the first of February, so we're hoping to have a nice, user-friendly, easier experience for our teachers to apply for funding. And finally, I will be attending the National Association of Educational Foundations Conference in Las Vegas in March, so excited to bring back some new ideas to implement here into our district and steal from those that are doing great things around the country. Thank you. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Branding matters. That's a great move. Yeah, very nice. All right, on to administrative reports and recommendations. First up, Dr. Merritt.
All right. Thank you, President Wilson, and as Josh so eloquently stated, this month is School Board Recognition Month, and I really appreciate every month, every board meeting, how you all get so excited to celebrate during celebrating success. You say it's your favorite part of the meeting, and tonight is an opportunity to in turn celebrate you for all of the work that you do on behalf of our students and our school community. We know that this is a job that you don't often get thanked for the work that you do. A lot of times, you get criticized for work when you're keeping your eyes focused on making those decisions that you know are best for students, and you continue to show up for our, our students and our school community. So we appreciate you. If you would mind, I would like to share a proclamation, that resolution that was passed by the Wayne Risa Board of Education. This was during their December meeting, and this is recognizing all school boards in Wayne County. So I will read this for you. If you can call that up, might want to make it bigger for people to see. Whereas the Board of Education of the 33 constituent school districts of Wayne County promote quality education for each and every child attending their schools, and whereas these committed public servants demonstrate dedication to their civic duty and voluntarily contribute countless hours of service on behalf of the students of Wayne County and their communities, and whereas Wayne County is strong advocates for the needs of students in their communities and with policymakers in Lansing and Washington, and whereas Wayne County school boards are committed to ensuring healthy and safe, engaging learning environments that lead to academic success, and whereas Wayne County school boards understand the importance of a quality education for its students and recognize this is the most important factor in the success of our communities, state, and country, and whereas local control continues to play a vital role in the success of public education, and whereas especially leading through and now recovering from the effects of the pandemic, where it was confirmed how important education is to all components of our society, and whereas school boards have been and continue to be under immense duress and pressure to deliver improved outcomes and results now to ensure that each and every student recovers from the interruptions of learning that took place during that time, thus deserve special recognition for their service. And whereas the State of Michigan and the State Board of Education have declared January 2023 as School Board Recognition Month, now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Regional Educational Service Agency Board of Education, in the spirit of School Board Recognition Month, recognizes, celebrates, and commends the dedication, contribution, and leadership of the Wayne County School Boards of Education, presented and adopted December 14th, 2022. To our esteemed members of the Plymouth-Canton Community Schools Board of Education, on behalf of our entire PCCS family, we want to thank you for your vision, your voice, and most importantly, for your advocacy to elevate every student every day without exception. Please accept a small token of our appreciation for all that you do to ensure that our students learn, prepare, and thrive.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Thank you. Oh, nice.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you so much. Thank you. Look at this lovely, lovely. Oh, thank you. Place we can come and breathe.
That's right. So I think the expectation is that we all wear our sweatshirts at the next meeting.
There you go. All right. Let's do that. I don't know. Make a five-minute term.
That's right. Well, once again, thank you, Dr. Merritt. I think I speak on behalf of the, the entire Board of Education, and I say, you know, it truly is a pleasure to serve the district and work alongside the administration, so thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Now that we have goodies, very much, we are on to Finance and Operations with WPS.
Thank you. This evening, we have the members of our custodial team, including representatives from ABM, Todd Fleming, Deana Davis, and Melissa Mascarello. Mascarello. I get that wrong. And internally, our Director of Operations, Rich Welsh, to present the custodial KPIs, key, key performance indicators, to highlight where we are with custodial operations in our district. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Welcome, new board members. Good to see you. We're here tonight to discuss our key performance indicators from the first quarter of this school year. And with that, my name is Todd Fleming. I'm a regional director with ABM. This is Deana Davis. She's also a regional director of ABM. And this is Melissa Mascarello, who is the account manager here for Plymouth-Canton School District, and she's going to start us off with the actual KPIs.
All right. Go ahead and, yeah, somebody, take that. Yep. Real organized here. So let me, is this in order? Oh, took my first one. Sorry about that. So what you're going to see here on the first slide here is the average inspection scores across the district by month. This chart here represents the average, like I said, the score of the past three months. You can see here, remained pretty flat. However, there was a slight decrease month over month, which was expected as the building occupants moved throughout the schools. This slide compares our current quarter one data versus our quarter one data from this time last year. As you can see, there was a drastic improvement in the quantity, the quantity of the inspections performed. The average inspection score also increased over the same time period. This is mainly due to having a full staff and full management team dating back to July, which resulted in a very successful summer clean. We received numerous compliments from building administrators at various schools that stated that the buildings had never looked so good when returned this past school year. This graph here represents the average inspection score by building. Our target average score is 90%, and 19 buildings exceeded that target in quarter one. Last quarter, we had 17 buildings that exceeded our 90% target, which shows that we are continuously improving. While the scores at the park have improved, we do recognize- This graph here represents the average inspection score by building. Our target average score is ninety percent, and nineteen buildings exceeded that target in quarter one. Last quarter, we had seventeen buildings that exceeded our ninety percent target, which shows that we are continuously improving. While the scores at the park have improved, we do recognize that these scores do not meet the expectations of the district or ABM. And these scores are directly correlated with our staff turnover within these buildings. However, the turnover that is taking place is a positive turnover, and we are placing more reliable and skilled employees in these buildings. This graph represents the number of inspections performed in each building during quarter one. Over thirteen hundred inspections were conducted. Our target for quarter one was at least twenty-five inspections per building, which was accomplished at all PCCS buildings with the exception of the transportation building. Our management team focused the most in buildings with quality concerns and also buildings with the larger student populations. Our management team also conducted frequent face-to-face meetings with administrators at buildings where our quality scores were not meeting the expectations. Here are the average inspection scores by area with the highest scores listed at the top of the graph and the lowest at the bottom. Training concentration in those areas will be taking, well, they did take place over this past winter break. And we held a staff training this past Thursday with all of the staff, which included a lot of these target areas here. So, yeah. Looking at this chart here, we were pleased to see that only three of the top ten deficiencies were related to the floor appearance. However, we do anticipate with snow and salt beginning this winter that that will increase throughout the buildings. We did use the winter break period to focus on the disinfection, high-touch point surfaces in all the classrooms. We detailed the classrooms and the hallways, gyms, cafeterias, all of that areas. And this graph here shows the average inspection score of the top ten deficient items, which is the orange line as it relates to the number of times they were deficient during quarter one, which is represented by the blue columns. And then I'm going to pass it to Rich.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rich Welsh. I'm the Director of Operations. This goes over our Google Task, Google Doc sheet. So for our new board members, we have a Google Doc system set up so that any principal, staff, secretaries, custodian, PEs, anybody can go into these systems and put in any deficiencies that they have missed, so that they see that they've missed. So it's kind of a double check for us. Looking at this, it has gone a huge decrease from quarter one of last year to quarter one of this year. You know, I believe the biggest reason for this decline in entries in Google Docs, which is within the Google Doc form, is consistency, which is, you know, a positive thing. We have finally reached the point with ABM that the PCCS staff is seeing the same cleaners day on, day in, day over day. They feel comfortable with addressing issues as they see the ABM staff, and they are comfortable with having that conversation. One example came yesterday when I was visiting Pioneer. I had a conversation with Mr. Ron, Mrs. Joy, who are the secretary and principal there. And I'm like, hey, guys, I haven't, you guys haven't called me and talked to me very much lately. What's going on? How's everything going? And he just said, Rich, it's consistent. We have the same people. We bought gift cards for everybody this Christmas. You know, we haven't done that in a long time. So I think we're getting there, and it's a big buy-in now and positive. It's all positive. So I think that is one of the biggest things that played the decrease.
So our staffing slide, as of last week, our head count and FTE count has increased by two. We are currently operating with a head count of ninety-two, which equates to eighty-nine FTEs. Our annualized turnover increased slightly, but this is due to positive turnover where we can separate with underperforming employees. Industry standard and nearby turnover rates have been north of one hundred and twenty-five percent over the past year. As you can see, PCCS continues to be an industry leader in the area as it relates to turnover. So part of the things we try to do to engage our employees with ABM is employee appreciation. In the last twelve months, we have been extremely challenged within our industry. We're always trying to find unique ways to show our appreciation to our staff. In September, ABM held a private concert by Usher where every employee could attend virtually. Locally, we will be holding our holiday appreciation luncheon on January fifth, which Melissa just spoke of. So second quarter goals. Staffing, we continue to hire and emphasize on retention. And to be honest, staffing will never leave this list. We'll continue with our employee training, focus on areas of improvement, specifically hard surface common areas with heavy foot traffic due to the incoming snow and salt. Lastly, and successfully, a winter break cleaning. That's what we got.
Fantastic. Thank you. Member Keel, do you want to add any?
Yes, I'll just weigh in before the other board members do. So first, I want to congratulate ABM. You're not quite to where you need to be for full staffing. I believe that we need to have ninety-three FTE in order to be fully staffed with a number of substitutes that we would have. But you're substantially better than what we saw last year. And so I appreciate the partnership that we've had in hiring and adjusting the wage rates to be able to do this. And I appreciate the dedication that you've had in hiring those people and also the positive turnover. We've seen that improvement in the scores that you have, and it's, you know, it's not a wonder. You know, when you actually have the people that are there, then you get a better job with the clean. Where we need to be, especially in the high schools, and I appreciate the acknowledgement of that and the work that you're doing to address those things. So again, I just want to thank you for the partnership, and I look forward to seeing in our next quarter scores improvements across the board, even though we're going to have the snow. Because I know that with your commitment to continuous improvement and the work that you're doing and working with your teams, that you'll be able to make those, you'll be able to achieve that. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll open up to additional questions.
We discussed this at our FNO, our last FNO committee meeting, so I personally do not have any other questions.
I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you for the detailed work, the detailed cleaning over the break. That was very helpful. And as Member Keel said, appreciate the improvement and look forward to continuous improvement.
I just want to say thank you for all of your hard work. I know there's been a tremendous improvement since last year, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just thank you. I'm not aware of everything, but it sounds like you've been really working hard, so thank you.
Thank you.
Member McCoy?
I'm just looking forward to the scores going up, especially like the floors, because that just makes your whole room look dirty. But thanks for getting like more fully staffed.
Absolutely. Perfect. And with that, I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we're doing a consider approval of a resolution for bid pack EL three is Mr. Elementary, first reading. This evening, we have our architects with TMP, Derek Dinkaloo, our construction manager, McCarthy Smith with Brian Gessman. They also have other members of their staff here as well. But they're going to take us through a brief presentation of what the Spister Elementary School project includes and then the bid results obtained. Mr. Dinkaloo.
Thank you. So Spister is, just as a quick reminder, because I think everybody's seen this, is similar to most of the elementary projects that we've already done where there's an addition to the south that's an gymnasium with a stage, and that's to give equity across the district to have separate cafeterias and gyms. And then two learning spaces, one which is dedicated as an art room. And then in the building renovation, there's the addition. The big work being bathroom renovations, work in the media centers, and then some updates to that cafeteria. So that's really the quick overview of the work.
Additionally, here's just a couple of elevations or renderings of what that project might look like. So those familiar with the ongoing work at like Bird Elementary or Smith Elementary, very similar in nature. Part of this bond program was equity amongst the district, and so this certainly kind of matches that. Again, a couple of renderings of what the future construction would look like. And that's kind of a brief overview of what's to come. The next portion of this is the bid results. So first and foremost, again, I wanted to welcome our new board members. As we receive proposals or bids, we go through post-bid interviews, and we bring forth those results to the Finance and Operations Committee, and then we bring this forth to the Board of Education for their initial review and approval. So on December thirteenth, we received proposals for bid package EL three is Mr. Elementary School, which consisted of multiple bid divisions. One thing that we've been combating through COVID is price escalation and really labor shortages. So I am pleased to announce, as we go through, we had quite a bitter turnout on bid day. So through all the scopes of work, through all the bid divisions, we received ninety proposals, ninety bids. Of those ninety bids, five of those were women-owned businesses, four of those were minority-owned businesses, forty of which were, forty of which were union companies, and fifty of those were non-union companies. If you mind scrolling down to the bid summary, which would be probably one of the last, keep going. It's a big spreadsheet that's always difficult to read.
I think it's on page eight.
Perfect. So again, as promised, it's a large spreadsheet that's difficult to read. But what this does is this breaks down all of the proposals that we received by bid division. So bid divisions is the different scopes of work, asphalt paving, concrete, that type of thing. So what you see there is the apparent low bidders. If for some reason the low qualified bidder or low bidder was not qualified or had an error in their proposal, you'll see that identified with an asterisk and also identified within those proposals that we went to the second low bidder. Important to note, then out of the nine minority and/or women-owned companies, one of those companies was indeed low and is included. That's Foster Floors. That's included as part of this proposal today. As we go down to the construction budget, we started out with a construction budget of just over five million dollars. Not included today but being accounted for is a placeholder of five hundred thousand dollars, which is for future playground. Members here might recall usually bid out as a separate item, so it's still part of this overall budget. So you see us reduce that overall construction budget by five hundred thousand dollars, which is the placeholder for future, a future bid that we brought forth in front of you in the future, which gives us a revised construction budget of four point five million dollars, which then gives us a base bid total of four point eight million and change, giving us a base bid negative variance of three hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars, which is roughly about seven percent. As a reminder for the board and maybe new information for some new board members, strategies that we've looked at previously and then moving forward is what are our options? What can we do to combat this inflation that we've kind of seen over the last two or three years? So things that we're looking at is alternates, things that we can get prices on now that the district could potentially elect to move forward with now or put on a placeholder list where maybe things settle down and then we could afford to do at a later date. So one of those items is alternate number one, which is the LED lighting replacement. That exists in the building itself, so the new construction certainly would have all new LED lights. But as a potential, you know, potential savings down the line, we could look at a LED lighting replacement of four hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars. You do not see that in the awarded or recommended location at this point, just based on where the bid variance sits today. The other alternate is alternate number two, which is additional restroom remodeling. The vast majority as part of base bid, as part of the original bond, was included to do bathroom upgrades, as Mr. Dinkaloo had referenced. There were four restrooms that were not included as part of that because they had been renovated circa two thousand and twelve. So upon going back through, talking with the building stakeholders, felt it was important to at least get pricing for that, to bring all of that up to speed, whether that be aesthetic or whether that be smell. So maybe an opportunity for us to kind of bring everything up to the same level. So with that, we are including that recommendation for the additional restroom remodel of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five, which would give us a total cost of four point nine million dollars and change, which would give us a negative variance of a negative three hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. With that, happy to open it up to questions that I might be of assistance.
Treasure Keel, would you like to add anything?
I'm going to just ask my questions as we go around.
Okay, so we'll start with Member Christian.
And we, again, we talked about this at our FNO committee meeting last year. I'm a little, I understand the reasoning for breaking pricing out as an alternate to try to find creative ways to reduce our base bid and meet our budget. I hate to see the LED lighting replacement kind of pulled off the table, but understand that that is low-hanging fruit and parts of the project are important to kind of move forward with. So I do hope that we can circle back to this at the end of our bond program with, when we see some savings, you know, over the years. I really don't have any questions. I just wanted to add that as a personal comment.
Along the same lines, if I remember correctly in our discussion, the estimates we've received for the LED light replacements, I think, are about three X what we had originally estimated. So we anticipate as supply chains get better and as things clean up, that we'll be able to consider this in the future. And when we also had conversations about, do LEDs deliver us energy savings, either through lower-cost electricity that are used or perhaps even through reduced replacements of the fixtures? And I think it would take us about forty years to make up the four hundred thousand dollars that we're saving here as part of this process. So it really wasn't a substantial savings that we would have as part of this. On the other hand, the bathrooms were something we also discussed and said, should we include this or not include this? And we recommended that they be included, as you're seeing them here, because of a smell issue. That the surfaces that are there were absorbing odors in that process and that they really, to make an equitable and pleasant experience for the residents and, I'm sorry, the occupants, the students of the building, we wanted to make sure that got done. So that was part of that process. The other thing I wanted to discuss and point out is that we appreciate the markup that you've done on the building in terms of how it's being used right now. So that's on the drawing you have where we actually have a narration of what is there today. The one thing I wanted to point out is that our original principles that we were doing in this bond was to bring equity, to have dedicated spaces for gym and for cafeteria. So we weren't having to share those things, as well as to have dedicated spaces for art and music. This building actually has dedicated spaces for art and music today, but with the improvements that we're doing here, we'll have a better space for music as well as art in this process. And we will then have, that will give us a total of three open classrooms. Now, you would say perhaps we don't need to have these three open classrooms. When we've looked at the enrollment projections with the new subdivision that's going in across the street, as well as the other changes that we see and some of the other things that we're doing with respect to school of choice, we think that this is a good investment for us to do as part of the district. So these were all things that we discussed extensively in the FNO presentation. And thank you for the additional detail that goes into this. So I didn't have any comments, per se, but just that additional information.
No questions. I understand the alternate in the decision-making process and that. And also want to thank the community for this investment, this ongoing investment. As we talk about these updates, we could not do this without you, the community. So thank you for that.
Just two questions. With the addition, when will it be completed? And how does that tie in with the new community that's going in?
So if approved, we would plan on breaking ground this spring, and then it would be turning over winter of two thousand and twenty-four.
Two thousand and twenty-four. So it would be ready in time for?
The following. So it depends on how each building handles.
Wouldn't be ready for school starting.
You got it for sure.
Right. Okay. Okay. And then the other one, just out of, to refresh my memory. I know we've done a number of school, number of elementary schools now. How many more do we have to do?
I think it's a great question. We just talked about this the other day. I'm going to say the wrong number.
EL one was four buildings. EL three, or two was three buildings. That was seven. This is number eight. And I believe we have fourteen in total, right?
Fourteen. More than halfway.
I felt like we were halfway. We're right, you know, right around halfway when we were discussing this.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for all the hard work. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
I just had a question. Is the playground going to be similar than to the other schools, and is that planned out already?
It is in the process of being planned, but to your point, yes. So when we kind of broke ground on the playground, we kind of brought everybody together. So the hope is to kind of have a uniform, not only from a maintenance standpoint, but from an equity standpoint. For the most part, everybody's got the same equipment. Now granted, maybe there's some newer equipment that PTO purchased from a certain building that doesn't need to go away. But all the new that doesn't need to go away, but all the new equipment is pretty much a standard, you know, at each, across the district.
Now, I remember too, and it's been a while since I've been over there, but did they have like a lot of fields there, like for soccer?
At Isbister?
Yeah.
So they do have some, they have some, you know, like kickball or where it's just, I think more of a community thing necessarily than like a playground.
Right.
But that's kind of where this addition is, in general, it's not taking place of the entire field, but there is a field adjacent to the addition.
And that's gonna stay like the field and that, okay.
Thank you. They're on page 42 of the packet, if you can see an overhead view of the entire site. And so it shows the different fields and where this would go in, so.
Page seven of the PowerPoint.
If you're looking at the whole packet, it's page 43 of the PDF.
Page seven of the PowerPoint. So I'd like to echo members of dues and thank the community for passing this bond years ago, that's allowing us to provide all these things for our students, really excited about it. It'll be great for those schools to get a separate gym and a cafeteria. And I really also appreciate on your spreadsheet where you have included the columns for women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, I really like that that is being called out now, so thank you so much for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Dinkaloo's gonna stick around because the next one is to consider approval of a resolution for the purchase of Bond Classroom Furniture, first reading. He's gonna be joined by Jen, I forgot your last name, sorry.
Mayno.
Mayno, sorry. And Jen is gonna take us through a brief overview of what was selected and the results of this bid award.
Yes, good evening. On December 13th, TNP Architecture received quotes for furnishing for Pioneer Middle School, Isbister Elementary School, and some additional furniture for the EL1 and EL2 elementary schools. Quotes were obtained based on pre-negotiated bid contracts for middle school classrooms. We kicked off that effort in June of last year with District Administration Anthony Ruela from Curriculum and the middle school principals. And we really used Liberty Middle School as sort of a jumping off point, and a lot of the drivers for design were influenced from feedback from Liberty. The bond budget for that was $800,000. That included classroom furniture, learning commons furniture, and main office furniture. And the final cost was $724,774.34 for a positive variance of $75,225.66. For Isbister Elementary School, we started that in September of last year, and the drivers for that was really based on the furniture packages and the efforts that we did for EL1 and EL2. The bond budget for that included classroom and learning commons furniture was $417,000, and the final cost for that was $329,348.49 for a positive variance of $87,651.51. And then for the additional furniture at EL1 and EL2, when we first kicked off elementary school furniture was right in the peak of COVID, and so we, for kindergarten classrooms, we elected to go with desks that could be easily separated. Now, we would like to go back to group tables, which really work well for that kindergarten setting, so we are outfitting the kindergarten classrooms with group tables. Cost for that is $159,861.91. So if you take the total positive variance for Pioneer and Middle School and you add those up, you get $162,877.17, and you subtract the additional furniture for EL1 and EL2 at $159,861.91, and you get a kind of overall positive variance of $3,015.
Again, I just want to mention we're using the state of Michigan cooperative bid pricing for the furniture, so that's why it's a shorter timeline for them to order, so that we can get this in a hopefully reasonable amount of time. That's been a challenge of supply chain this year.
Getting better as well, though, just like the rest of the world.
I'll also note that when Jen, when Jen was talking about the kindergarten, so those desks that were bought for EL1 and EL2 were then moved over, will be moved over to Isbister for upgrades, so we're doing a little shift.
Are there any questions?
We'll start with the member McCoy.
I don't really have any questions, this looks great, thank you so much. Like that you're saving a little bit of money on it, but I really like the way you take all the learning from the other buildings and you incorporate it going forward. It's really exciting to see all these great learning spaces for our students and staff.
Yes.
Member Picard.
I just had a question to the chairs, do the chairs for the kindergartners have wheels on them or no?
They do not.
Okay, okay, that's good, okay. Just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say thank you, I really like the, thank you for all the presentations, and I like the layout of the furniture, the design of the furniture, so.
No questions, great design, great layout, and loved hearing about the savings, thanks.
Of course.
So we had a lot of conversations about this in FNO, and so again, appreciate that bringing this information forward. The nice thing that I like seeing about this is when we take this bond program as a whole, we're doing this across the whole district. So you see a lot of opportunities where we can take the learnings that we had from the first buildings and not throw away that furniture, but instead to repurpose that in other buildings and put more appropriate furniture there based upon those learnings. So rather than saying, oh, I'm sorry, your building's done, we're moving things around. And yes, it's a little bit more work for our maintenance and operations teams to do that, but it makes sure that we get the right equipment in the schools to support the work that they're doing. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into that and the work that's going on to standardize the equipment and the furniture that is across the whole district, so that we've got some consistency that as we do need to make those moves, we don't end up creating a hodgepodge in the environment. So looking forward to this, and I know that this will make a big difference in these schools.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't really have any questions. Again, we talked a lot about this last meeting, so thank you for your presentation. I echo, you know, the sentiments of my fellow board members here. I have children in elementary school who've already received some of this new furniture and they love it, so I'm really excited for the next phase of students to have this exact furniture for them to use as a learning tool, so thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Great work, no further questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is our Director of Facilities and Capital Projects, Mr. Tim Grzinski. He's going to cover for us the consider approval of a resolution for the purchase of 11 school buses and equipment, first reading. I'll just frame briefly that we discussed this in FNO as well, and we're going to, well, you can go ahead and discuss, we had serious, three, I think, three meetings of conversation about electric buses and the differences and the total cost of operating diesel, a gasoline, a propane, and electric bus, and I'll let you continue.
Welcome, everybody, Tim Grzinski, Director of Facilities and Capital Projects. Yeah, we had a really good process with the FNO committee, I think, and we all learned a lot, I thought. What brought it about was the push through the EPA and the infrastructure bill to electrify school buses. But we also expanded and tried to compare diesel to gas, diesel to propane, and all the other, we've already got propane, we've got diesel, we've got gas. So then we looked at electrical. Through it all, we found that propane and electrical are, the timing isn't quite right for us yet to move forward in a, in a large purchase on that. We would like to go back and try and develop an overall strategy in a way that we could ease into that. But what we did find surprisingly, and to me, was that gasoline buses, over the life of our buses, our 10 years, saved us about $40,000 a bus. So we went back to MSBO, adjusted our quotes, and came forward, back to the board with the recommendation that we buy 11 gasoline-powered special education buses instead of diesel. So we have the existing infrastructure to accommodate the fuel, we'll need more gas, but we'll need less diesel. So we have the existing infrastructure now to handle that, and we think we'll be able to move forward smoothly.
You want to, the conversation about these buses also has some extra equipment on them?
Sure, so we, Bluebird is the predominant bus in our fleet. We like to stay with Bluebird from a maintenance familiarity standpoint, from an operational standpoint for the, for the drivers. But these buses also come with enhanced safety features that the other buses don't include, either don't offer or don't include as standard equipment. So we feel the safety of these buses is, gives us a better return than the other buses.
We also have cameras on them and some other equipment that total about $3,000 per bus.
So all of our buses have cameras with SD cards in them, and they also have a radio system that allows us to communicate as a group in the morning between the drivers. And those are standard pricing for each bus.
And so under the MSBO bus purchase program, the entire state of Michigan participates in the purchase using the MSBO statewide information that they amass. Unfortunately, the pricing ends on January 31st.
Well, it ended, but we have the vendors holding the price for us.
As we get through the two reads. So we'll have a first read this evening, and then we'll have a final reading, hopefully on the 24th.
We'll start with the member McCoy, with any questions?
I don't have any questions, thank you so much, that was a lot of information.
It was a lot of fun. Really found out a lot. Seriously, it was.
We learned a lot.
We did.
We did. Member Picard?
No, I have no questions, thank you. I have no questions.
No questions.
So just some context around this, this is that we really had a predisposition to wanting to explore electric buses because of the incentives that were provided and the lower operating costs that we had. The struggle with electric buses for us as a district is our three-tier system and that we get about 100 miles that are used in our buses, and that with the heating and cooling that's used in these buses, especially being special education buses, that you end up with about 50 miles of range. And so that, that is where it was not an option for us to consider. It is something we're gonna look at and continue to consider in the future, at least dip our toes in the electric buses, but we're really appreciative of the work that, that you did, Tim, in analyzing these and exploring all the different options. We looked at diesel, we looked at gasoline power, we looked at compressed natural gas, we looked at propane, we looked at electric, and had a lot of rounds of discussions and conversations, and Tim, I think, came back three times to FNO with options and different considerations. So at the end of the day, I'm really excited because these not only provide us an operational savings that we have, but they also save us about $15,000 in the purchase price of these buses over the diesel ones. So diesel is cheaper to purchase, I'm sorry, gas is cheaper to purchase and cheaper for us to maintain. So if we hadn't gone through that work and all the great analysis that you've done, then we might not have come up with that great solution, and we really appreciate all the effort that went into it.
I actually sat in on another webinar today on Clean Bus Program. So now what the, the bus companies are now offering diesel heaters for the electrical buses. To try, you know, in the colder weather, they have to put supplementary heaters in because you'll, you'll use all your juice up trying to heat the cabin. So they're now offering sort of portable diesel to generate heat in the compartment. I, I just thought it was worth pointing out, but it's interesting stuff, it really is.
So I think the world will change a lot. I mean, there's a lot of movement that we're seeing with respect to heat pumps versus electric resistant heaters that occur in electric vehicles to drive better heat and cooling in, so we'll be paying attention to this space as we continue to make bus purchases. This was the oldest set of buses that we are replacing, so I think it's 2025, if I remember correctly, is when we'll have our next set of purchases.
Correct.
So we've got a little ways, and hopefully the market matures, and we'll have other options there as well as the same incentives to drive this.
Thanks. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I don't have any questions, it's okay. You provided such a good summary, so no, good. Thank you, Mr. Grzinski.
FNO committee is out of control.
That's what they thought when they had to keep coming back with other options, so.
All right, next up.
Action items?
All right, so this is action item 230139, consider approval of a resolution for a district fiber maintenance service contract, and this is the final reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for district fiber maintenance service contract, action item 230139, final reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, questions?
Just to provide some context for everybody, we did discuss this extensively in FNO, as well as in the last board meeting, but for our new board members, this is for the maintenance of our fiber optic system that we have throughout the district, and this is the cost associated to do that. We oftentimes get reimbursed for activities that occur when somebody digs a backhoe through a fiber or anything like that, the insurance companies oftentimes reimburse us for that. We also have a shared infrastructure doing proportions of this fiber, I believe with Canton Township, and so some of those costs are shared with them as part of this work. This is the maximum cost that we have, and it's based upon our previous experience rates for doing fiber maintenance. So, and this vendor that we're working with is one that we've worked with before, and we've been very happy with them.
Excellent, any other questions? All right, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any approve, any oppose, say nope? All right, action item passes seven to zero. Next is action item 230140, consider approval of resolution for security needs related to bid package EL2, and once again, this is a final reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for security needs related to bid package EL2, action item 230140, final reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved by a member Kehoe, seconded by a member Christensen, discussion?
Again, for our new board members, this was discussed extensively in FNO, as well as at the last board meeting. This is the security and camera upgrades that we're doing in our schools. We went out on the competitive bid process as well as identified a local bidder that was, provided us a better price that we've had previous experience with, so we're always happy to choose somebody that is local as part of the process. We're very happy with the work that they've done for us, and they'll save us some money as part of the work that we're doing.
Any further discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any oppose, say nope? Action item passes seven, zero. Next action item is action item 230141, consider approval of resolution in support of stormwater management plan, and this is the first and final reading.
Mr. President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution in support of a stormwater management plan, action item 230141, first and final reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Deputy, do you want to?
Sure.
So every five years, we have to reapprove or renew our approval of our stormwater management plan. We have a consulting firm called Arch Environmental that helps us manage such a plan. There's many binders because there's a site plan and a stormwater management plan per each building in the district. Mr. Grzinski helps to manage that process, and so if part of our bid awards for our construction projects, you are required to have a current stormwater management plan. And so when we went to the state with our permitting for EL3, they reminded us that it's our five-year renewal cycle and that's up. So that's why it's a first and final this evening, and I apologize for the lateness, but that's, that's why we have to do this every five years, even though it's exactly the same as you passed five years ago.
Perfect, any, any further discussion? All right, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any oppose, say nope? All right, action item passes seven, zero. All right, on to student services with Mr. Tiskowitz.
Thank you, President Wilson. Before you tonight is a resolution to consider the approval of the enrollment of non-resident applicants for the 2023-24 school year pursuant to school of choice, sections 105 and 105C. This is a first reading to allow a minimum of one seat for kindergarten through 10th grade, with a maximum of 500 seats for school of choice students for the 23-24 school year. I would point out that this is for section 105 and 105C, and what that simply means is if we were just to do section 105, that would only allow us to accept students within Wayne County. us to accept students within Wayne County. By doing 105C, it allows us to do the contiguous counties to Wayne County, so Macomb, Oakland, Washington, all those counties that touch Wayne County. So that is the proposal before you tonight.
All right, any questions?
Yes, I have a question. I did review the information in board notes and appreciate that, Dr. Merritt. With regard to timelines, so our community knows when the applications will be accepted, starting when and the closing date, because it is a pretty tight timeline. Could someone walk us through that?
Yeah, we're required by law to follow the timeline. We'll have a 30-day enrollment or advertising window. If the board approves this on the final read on January 24th, the 30-day window would start on the 25th and go through the 23rd of February. Then we have a 30-day required application period where we would accept any applications from February 24th through March 22nd. And then we have, would have to have a lottery if there were over 500 families that were looking for school of choice. If there wasn't a lottery, then we could go, go ahead and start placing students or offering seats to students right away.
And just to clarify, it's not actually a lottery if you have more than 500, it's a lottery if you have more demand than seats available.
Got it.
That's when we'd have a lottery.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so for the community, because we do run into this almost every year, once that cutoff date has been established, there are no exceptions.
Correct.
So I know we get emails and it's hard saying no to families, especially when we have space, but this is the timeline, this is the process and we're following, you said, state law in this, so we cannot deviate from that. So for the community, if you're watching or for people that are in the audience, this is why we have that cutoff date and we can't have any openings after that.
One of the things that we've done proactively is as we've received calls throughout the school year, we've maintained a list, contact information so that if the board approves it, then we can certainly contact families and let them know what the timeline is, what the process is. So we've, we've had probably over 100 people inquire about it already, so we do have a good start in terms of families that would like this option.
How do we promote it during the 30-day period?
Pretty much using all of our outlets, internal and some external outlets. We do a lot of boosting through our social media outlets because that allows us to get outside of our common, normal social media audience, regularly messaging through our website, 81 the Park, all of our traditional outlets. We're, we're pretty aggressive about it during those 30 days.
Can I have, I have a follow-up to what President Wilson just asked. Are we doing any paid advertisement, targeted advertisement on social media, like those that are sponsored, that show up for people?
Yep, that's exactly what boosting is. So it is paid. Luckily, it's a really great return on investment. It's pretty low cost and you get a lot of reach. And so that is one form of paid. We also engage media relations quite a bit. You know, we engage all of the local media from the surrounding counties and we've had good success with that.
Do we take out any online ads in like Hometown Life or anything?
Done it in the past.
Yeah, okay, great.
So Kurt, one question. We, I know we have preference for, for siblings. How does that work or does that?
If, if there's a family with a student currently enrolled this year that has a sibling that is interested next year, we can give them preference. And if there was a lottery, we would allow them to not have to go into the lottery and we would give them a preference. That's the only way that we can allow families, they still have to apply, but we can give them preference, but they do definitely have to apply.
And so we communicate to all those families at the same time to let them know that this enrollment period starts and that this is what they have to do. Because I know there's been some confusion for families in the past where they maybe misunderstood that process.
Yes.
So can I ask?
We've learned a lot.
So the enrollment period is in February for next year's placement?
Correct.
That seem, just as a parent, I mean, a lot of parents don't make educational decisions until the summer. Is there, is that state law or something?
The reason we do that is because a lot of the other educational entities out there are also marketing at that time. And we, we have a lot of people who inquire early. I just actually responded to an email that we haven't started yet. So they are, they are aware that it's an early process. The reason for that is, is because of the timeline that we have to follow and then to register all the students. It's very time consuming. So we have to, to be able to make sure we have the staffing, the appropriate staff and all that kind of stuff. So it's quite a process.
True.
One thing I would add is that our timeline is 30 days of marketing, then 30 days of application collection, then 10 to 15 days of placement. So by the time you get through the whole process, it's not February.
You're at the end of the school year. Yeah, you're pretty close to me.
And it is a very competitive space.
Yeah, okay, I understand.
We've actually moved it up over the years because we were late to the game. So by the time that we offered placements for people that applied, they had already chosen to go elsewhere because they had heard quickly. So we, I think we were starting in February before and we moved.
We were and we found that was actually way too late. So Dr. Merritt's right and we've seen good success with moving it up as we have.
Okay. Good question. I have a question. I didn't know if you did through the order there.
No.
I just had a question that, so some of our programs that we have, like the STEM and TAG and all that, I know they're very limited spaces for those. Does that, does the residents that live in our district get first dibs on that or is that just open for everybody? Because I know there were some concerns of just in general spaces without any of the school choice stuff, just even in our community, that there might not be enough spaces just for people who apply. So I was kind of wondering if that comes into play or is that just open game for everybody then?
So our students would have the opportunity that are currently enrolled to have, you know, go through the scheduling process. And the school of choice families, because they're kind of coming in later, would be able to, you know, take any spot that was available after that, so.
And specifically for TAG, TAG is not an open enrollment program, it's actually a qualification program. So there are qualifying scores that students have to get first from the NWA to take the COGAT, then they get a qualifying score from the COGAT to actually be enrolled in the, in the TAG program. So that's not an open enrollment program in, in the same form as a traditional schools of choice program. So we, we have a process that's, that families go through, both internal families and then families outside of, in the PCCS district that are not currently attending that do those things.
That, so they would also be considered into the TAG program along with everybody else, depending on their scores?
Depending on how many, what our number of spaces are.
But only for TAG, it's only resident. They potentially not attend PCS schools, but they'd have to be a resident district in order to apply. Resident has the district.
Oh, resident, oh, gotcha.
So they may be currently attending a, a non-public or a charter. In, in the district and then they have to, you know, they take the qualifying assessments. If they, if they meet the qualifying score, then they can attend.
And they can attend, okay, got it. And with the other, what about the STEM and that, does that, does that just limit it to the?
That would be the direction that Mr. Tiskowitz said. So our kids, high school students, I think, start doing registrations in February. So they would have, we build the schedule based on the number of students that have selected a course or a program on academy and then those would be open then for students, schools of choice.
If there are spaces left. That's the, oh, gotcha. If there's spaces left, then they can, okay.
So they could, you know, potentially, if there's not space available and they're still accepted as a ninth grade student, they could take classes that are outside of an academy. And then once students are accepted through schools of choice, they become our, our students. So then they would be open to enrollment in the next year as any other student would be.
Thank you.
Other questions?
The one comment I'd like to make that always comes up is families that currently live in the district. And the question that I receive a lot is, you know, if school of choice families come in, would, could they take a seat that maybe, maybe I wanted to go to a different school? So when, if the board approves the school of choice process, it also starts the intra-district transfer process, which we look at all of our available seats and then we, we put that information out to our community residents to let them know if there was a change that they desired for another school, they would have that first opportunity to go to a different school if they so chose. They would, they would have to provide transportation as part of the, the intra-district transfer process. And then we would place the school of choice families where those seats are, whether they created a vacancy at one school or not. So that's how that works too, so.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question, but I think we covered it in policy, so I'm gonna go check my notes.
Okay.
Before I ask.
All right. Anything else?
Just the references, this is a first read, so it'll be coming back again in two weeks.
Oh, okay.
All right, we're all set?
There's a next. Yep, I'm gonna get the next one if there's no more questions. The next consideration is a resolution to approve the enrollment of non-resident students of PCCS employees for the 23-24 school year. This would allow any current employee that receives a paycheck from PCCS to bring their students here who are non-residents. And that would allow us to accept those, those students under the provisions of the School Aid Act. And this program allows the students to remain in the district as long as their, their parent or guardian is an employee in the district.
Any questions?
So if an employee leaves the district, then their child would have to go?
That's correct. And that we let them finish the school year out. But if, if for some reason, let's say if there was an employee that was laid off, there's provisions that allow their student to remain because it wasn't a choice their parent had. So they could stay if their parent was laid off. But if they left the district, they would not have that benefit anymore.
Can they apply for a school of choice position if they're eligible?
During an application window, absolutely.
Okay, so they would be able to finish out their school year, they'd be able to apply for a school of choice position and then assuming there was an available position in the lottery that was there. And I asked, would we preference them for the school that they were in?
I try to do that. I try to maintain consistency for the students and we've had a number of families who their students currently are attending here and they are planning to move, so they do school of choice. I do everything I can to maintain their school just for consistency and, you know, they have front base and all that kind of stuff.
That's student-centered.
I, I hand-place every student, so it, and I look at geographics, I look at, you know, distance traveled, where we have space. It's, that's another reason why it takes a long time to, especially with now 500 students, it's gonna take a little longer.
I understand that, yeah.
Thank you for that student-centered approach.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other questions? Just as a reminder, for the new board members, you know, this is the first reading, so if you have questions, you can email Dr. Merritt and myself. And traditionally, Dr. Merritt will then provide the answer to those questions to the full board, traditionally in board notes. So, so once again, that's just the first reading. All right, on to citizens' comments. We have one citizen's comment from John Johnston. Just as a reminder, you have three minutes to provide your comment.
Good evening, welcome to the new members and to the many I've seen their faces many a time. My name is John Johnston. I have attended meetings since October 26th of 2021, my first meeting. I started this as an education journey to learn about the school board working process. Starting with the 22-23 school year, I have tried to expand my learning process to the committees. I've learned about SPA, finance and operations. I've been there a couple of times, the policy committee, student voices in action. This is my current background. At the December 13th, 2022 Tuesday meeting, Bethany Rael gave a presentation on the fall data review. I believe she put a lot of effort into this presentation. It appears she used the newly hired statistician and had many graphs showing the state of the school district current facts. Why am I here? To tell Ms. Rael how sorry I felt for her. Some board members seemed to go on the defensive on part of the review. They were disappointed in some of the results and seemed to take their frustration out on Ms. Rael instead of asking questions about the results and how they could be improved. So as an observer of this process, I was disheartened by the way that she was treated. I've heard a few presentations over my time, but never have I seen a presenter made to feel she created a problem. I have learned how people sitting on the, at the board and staff table put in more time than just Tuesday, a month, two Tuesdays a month. Many of them participate in multiple committee meetings and can guess, I can't guess how many private meetings they hold amongst themselves. I have seen Dr. Merritt at every school board meeting and committee meeting I have attended and I've commented to her saying how that is an extraordinary feat. I appreciate their efforts, but was saddened by the treatment of the presenter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, and the citizens' comments on to discussion. The first discussion item is the Plymouth Township SRO. There was a lot of discussion at the December 13th board meeting on this. My recommendation at this point is that, you know, ultimately there is discussion at the last board meeting. However, between that time and this time, an article came out which contradicted a lot of the direction that was given at that board meeting. Specifically, it, it seems that Plymouth Township is really looking for a more robust in-depth partnership, which I think is fine. But if we're going to follow our procedures and process, before we even consider MOU, we really need to understand what they would like to see in the partnership. So my recommendation would be to, one, see if Plymouth Township would like to provide a presentation to, to the board to really outline so we can fully understand what they're looking for in a partnership. Then based on that presentation, of course, we can ask questions, get more clarity and then based on that, move to a MOU process. But at this point, based on the conversation that I saw when I reviewed the, the meeting online, there was, you know, one, you know, one direction that was given. And then based on the article that I read in the Hometown Life, you know, definitely a more robust program, which once again, isn't a problem. But I think as a board, what I've heard from multiple board members is as a board, we just want more clarity, we want to get some more details on what the township is, is looking to do. And, and then we can, once again, ask questions, then move to a MOU process. That's my recommendation to the board at this point.
You'd like me to respond to where I'm hearing what appears to be contradiction, so I just would like some clarity. I tried to respond in email and clarify what was shared in the newspaper article is representative of Plymouth Township Schools. So remember that Plymouth Township, their SROs will support every school in the township. That means Plymouth Canton Schools, private schools, charter schools. So as the chief is responding to a newspaper article, you didn't see him write Plymouth Canton, but Plymouth schools that he supports. What I shared at that meeting was that he is interested in, or what is proposing is to mirror the MOU that we have currently in place with our Canton Schools through that lens of equity to say specifically what are the roles and responsibilities that we have outlined for our schools, our SROs in Canton. If we looked at the portion of that MOU and we look at, I think he referenced in there the positive relationship that's specifically out of our MOU, where we wanted just the police presence, SRO not to just be responsive when we have situations that occur that law enforcement nature, but to be able to call, be called in. We talked, I think, at the last meeting about the DARE program in the past, or to work on cybersecurity and things along those lines. And so in terms of the contradiction, I wanted to just make sure that there, what I shared that evening is what we discussed and I don't see a contradiction of that in the article that came out, that wasn't a reference to Plymouth Canton. Again, the SRO agreement for Plymouth Township, they are adding an additional FTE to their force. Right now, if we have a situation in Plymouth Township, then we just call, if we're calling over to the station and they send any officer. The concept behind this from Chief, Chief Naitel is that one person on that force will be the SRO. And that person can go and get the NASRO training, the same that the Canton police officers have, that would truly have that expertise as a school resource officer. And then if we are mirroring that MOU that we have in place, that was a lot of work of the Board of Education to say what specifically do you expect in terms of those roles and responsibilities, that, that officer would then be able to mirror that with our township schools. And so with that question, try to clarify that in email, but if we're still hearing that there's believing that I was misrepresenting or miscommunicating, I just want to clarify what that miscommunication could be.
Member Kehoe?
So I just don't think we've heard from the township directly. So I think that as a board, when we're taking on this kind of relationship, it would be very useful for us to have a conversation directly with the township.
it would be very useful for us to have a conversation directly with the township. We've had those conversations directly with with Canton Township. And I think we've aligned on what the roles were, especially in our unique circumstances that exist at at Plymouth Canton Educational Park. So I think it would be worthwhile, as President Wilson has suggested, to to have a presentation from the township on what 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 this SRO position means to them for schools in general, but more precisely for us, for Plymouth Canton Schools. And to understand how that would work so that we can consider the parameters and the framework of how that would fit into the MOU. I think there's, as I discussed in the last meeting, I think there's a lot of value in us having an MOU regardless of that outcome to establish some boundaries and some some rules around how those SROs would would interact and participate with the district. But I think that the the parameters of those boundaries and the work that would be done would be best done from a presentation from Plymouth Township Police Department to the the district. And along the same lines, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I would welcome that same kind of presentation from the city of Plymouth so that we have all of the communities where our schools are based being able to share with us how that process might work and so that we can have a shared alignment and understanding of what their roles would be and what the process would be.
I may offer, based on our experience with Canton, it may be beneficial if you if we engage initially in a discussion about what it is that you want. And as we're looking at the basis, the conversation that we had with Canton and what is already in your MOU, so that if they're doing a presentation, that could be the vision of what they want for Plymouth Township, which could differ for Plymouth Canton. So it may be beneficial to say, is there something different that you're looking for from what's in our current MOU or that agreement? We want to have that to to give to the chief so that they could have a basis for creating their presentation.
But I think what you're what you're hearing is that they, you know, the township initiated this. So PCCS did not initiate this. And so I don't think it would be right for us to, you know, basically say this is our expectations without fully understanding what prompted them to want to launch this, how they saw PCCS, you know, play into that. And so what what you're hearing collectively from the board is really just a desire to hear from township on what they'd like to accomplish. And then I think at that point, that starts the dialogue between the two. Member Sudhu, did you?
Yeah, I.
I think member McCoy.
Yeah, Member Keel covered a lot, a lot of it, especially. And I watched the last meeting and I think it was Member Christiansen that asked about the the city and the consistency. So I guess one of my wonderings is, are we consistent with all of the schools that we have in Plymouth Canton Schools? Will all schools get that kind of support? Whatever relationship we are forming with the township, Plymouth Township, what about the elementary and the middle school in the city of Plymouth? And what about the elementary, middle schools in the Canton Township? So I'd like to see more consistency and in coordination of efforts. And I think when we read the the article, you explained it really well at the last meeting. But in the article, I think it just took me off a little bit in saying, I'll just read one line by Chief Nightell. Our goal is to have this officer in the schools as much as possible on a daily basis and accessible to all schools. And so my thing was, wow, they're coming in full force. They have a really different vision beyond what you had described. So I think having a presentation would be helpful to make sure that we are in alignment as well as how do we coordinate the efforts to make sure all schools are getting the support, proper support.
And I believe they did reference PCCS-specific schools in there in that article, did they?
No.
And along those same lines, it's our relationship with Canton Township is largely limited to the park. It is not.
No, the Canton Township is housed at the park. The SRO officers are there, but they support every school in Canton. So if we have an issue at any of our middle schools or elementary schools in Canton, then we have the three SROs that go directly to those schools.
Sure, okay, that makes sense. But I guess when we when we, if we were to use the words of Plymouth Township, we don't have those SROs in all of our schools. We have those SROs only at the park. And they're not daily at Discovery and Workman and Dodson and Field. You know, they're not present across all of those those other schools on a daily basis, correct?
Well, still, not correct in terms of they are daily housed at the park. But remember, not just in response to law enforcement, but our, you know, for example, we have police officers that are in the schools reading for March is Reading Month. They've already had invitations. I'm receiving their responses to come. They're in school where they do training and they're working on the positive. It's really the the issue, I think it's level B when we talked in our MOU with with our SROs for for Canton, really working to build that positive relationship. So they're very much a part of the schools so that the students know them. If maybe even talking to your own students seeing in in Canton, they've they're familiar with the SROs when, you know, they work within classrooms and and things along those lines. And I think as we talked about, really the vision of expansion for Canton is across the district, I think as a part of this conversation in terms of utilizing them in even more positive roles within the school system. So I think that the idea, and I I know that the chief from Plymouth was actually in closed session when we had all three chiefs together to really, as being new and looking at the value that's taken place within relationship in Canton and really wanting to mirror that for Plymouth. Now, I did get direction here to also engage the city of Plymouth. Haven't done that yet because difference as we shared with Canton, we actually pay for half. So that MOU is a little different in that we have a financial responsibility. And that's why they're in our buildings. They have offices in our buildings and a little bit different. And Plymouth, that's an that's their own FTE. And it's just that one person that would be assigned. With city of Plymouth, I don't know, you know, would they have an interest in that? So we'd have to engage them in that conversation.
So let's go to Patty real quick. But but the article does call out our schools. So Plymouth Canton Community Schools and Plymouth Township includes Starkweather Academy, Pioneer, et cetera, et cetera. So the article does specifically call out our our schools in the article.
The names of our schools, but not.
Correct. Miss Merritt, I think it'd be really useful for us to share what is Canton Township's involvement for us beyond the park? Because I, at least me personally, I'm very familiar with the work that they that they do at the park. But you've you've enlightened me this evening that there is work that's happening on a broader basis throughout Canton Township. And it'd be great if you could share with us that what that work is and the examples and the frequency that that's occurring.
That would be fantastic. Member McCoy.
So I guess the difference for me was that when you discussed and we discussed, it felt like what you were saying they wanted to do is different from what the chief was saying in that article. And so the disconnect could be from what he said to you. So we'd like to see what he is actually envisioning. Because I was I was at that original meeting at the park when they kind of talked about an SRO. And Anupam and I were like, what? And then they approve one at their meeting, really without discussion with the district. And we've had a longstanding relationship with Canton Township. Not just Chief Bob, but the chief before that has come to policy and explained the procedures and how they train their officers. So we've had a really longstanding relationship with them. And we're really comfortable with their vision of school policing. And I think that before we would approve any additional school police, and we want to make sure that that vision is going to align with what we see, especially with some of our schools that have more vulnerable populations of students. I think we really would like to hear from them what they're looking to do. That's what I would like.
I definitely think that that is fair. I will say again, in terms of an MOU, where I see the value is the willingness to partner and what those expectations will be. We don't have to do anything. We don't have to have an MOU. And when we call for a violation of the law, then this is going to be the same person that comes because that's how they've assigned that personnel. But what we're hearing, because of that relationship that you shared and I think a really strong model that we have in Canton, the new chief is saying, I would like to model that as well. And so what would what type of responsibilities would you like for that SRO to do within your building that is similar to what your students are getting in Canton? And so that's really where that conversation would begin. And so what may be described in a newspaper article as a vision, we haven't actually sat down to say the initial conversation that we had was just to mirror. So whatever, through the same lens of equity, whatever we think is the standard of care and relationship that we want for our students in Canton, wanting to be able to demonstrate that for our students in the township. And so really, that's that that basis. And I will share in terms of, I think I shared at the meeting, the history that we actually did have an SRO in Plymouth Township before. And that was a grant-funded position. So when that position was eliminated, when the grant was eliminated, they didn't continue that position. And now it's back to everyone who's, you know, whoever is assigned when we call is the person that goes out. And so again, I think historically, when we had that, and that was, again, the Dare program and also doing the positive relationship. You don't want the the police officers to just come when there is, you know, a situation where somebody has violated something. You want to look to to that more positive relationship. When we look at that that history of what was before, I think that that's really kind of the concept that we would want to continue, but actually strengthen what was what we had previously with the township versus what we have right now with Canton.
I think that was what the difference was. How it was described originally is more of what you said, you know, kind of in the beginning where it's if somebody calls, you know, if a school calls, it'd be the same person who comes. That that was kind of the basis of the understanding. And then in the article, it went into, we want officers in the school every day and more robust. And so once again, you know, I won't beat the, you know, the the horse to to death here. But ultimately, you know, I I think getting more clarity on that difference between if an officer, I mean, if a school calls, it's the same officer. Where's the gap between that and an officer in the school every day? And and just getting clarity. But, uh, Member Picard or Wester, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, I think that's good information.
Yeah, one of the things that, I guess I read the article a little bit differently than you did in that I didn't take it that they were going to be in the in the schools, the same school every day. It's one person. And I think that there is a lot of value in having that positive interaction, whether it's Reading Month or Dare or, you know, bringing in the dogs to get to know the kids, you know, read to the dog, or whatever it is. I think there's a lot of value to that. And I think that, you know, I agree, we need to understand it better. But I think it's a positive development in Plymouth Township. You know, I I remember my my, one of my children was in the school the last year of the Dare program. And it was, you know, it was very helpful to get to know that police are not scary, right? They can be scary. If they only see them in negative situations, it's a different interaction than they've had that police officer there reading to them or, you know, doing something positive. So I think there's a lot of value in having that positive relationship.
Fantastic. Member Christiansen, did you have anything?
You know, I think you you all have shared a lot of my sentiment as well, so I won't regurgitate it. But I I am in agreement with at least having, I would like to reopen that conversation with the township and just really understand what that relationship is. I mean, especially because I know you said, for example, the SROs in our Canton are are paid positions. And we share that that monetary commitment to those SROs. This is a little different. However, I know we do want to model our our MOU similarly. That difference, I think, we just want to understand that a little bit better.
Yeah.
All right.
I have a question.
Do we have?
Sure.
Okay. No, I was just going to say, so right now, so Canton is quite different than the township. So the schools, that would be a whole different process then. Okay, so there's nothing really covered right now. It's just kind of we call and then somebody comes.
How many Plymouth Canton schools are in the Plymouth Township as opposed to, say, charter schools or private institutions that would be different than? I mean, because we have a number of schools.
Yes, they mentioned that in the article. I think there's three.
Or four.
There's Barrent, Bird.
Oh, no, I was thinking about the the non-public, okay.
Oh, non-public, yeah.
So there's only three non-public, but then there's at least four.
No, there's more. Our Lady of Good Counsel is in the town. No, that's in the city.
No, it's in the city.
I can get that information back for you. I don't know out of my head, but.
It would be interesting to know because, you know, the the charter schools are, it's it's, they don't have a board like we have, you know. We're we're responsible for a larger number of schools overall in the township than one charter school or one private school, right? It would be a different kind of relationship, I I would think.
There's four schools, charter and private, Ivywood, New School High, New Morning School and Plymouth Scholars.
Okay, so we would be the only one, we, Canton would be the only one that would have.
It's in the city. Our Lady of Good Counsel is actually in the city. It's downtown. The church is in the township, but the the school is in the place.
It's in the old church.
Remember, yeah. And PCA, Plymouth Christian Academy is, I think, actually in Canton Township.
Is in Canton, yeah.
Yeah.
So we would be the only school that would have a high school, the only.
High school.
Would have a high school, yeah, Starkweather.
No, New Morning High.
Good morning.
It's a high school.
New School High.
New School High, sorry.
Okay, that, yeah, you're correct. That is in the township, okay.
All right, so we'll wait for Dr. Merritt to circle back on a potential presentation. Then we'll work as a board to get a calendar. You know, just as a reminder, the process to get some kind of agenda is at least two board members, which, once again, shouldn't be a problem to get this on the agenda. But once we're teed up for that, two more, two board members will basically make a motion to bring it to the, to put it on the agenda. I'll work with Dr. Merritt to to calendar it at that time.
Great.
Great. All right, 2023 Board Operating Procedure Discussion. So this goes to Member Picard's question. So why don't we do this just so the public has visibility as to these? We've gone over them publicly before, but I think it'd be good just to just to review them. And once again, this is, you know, the the purpose of this is, what are our operating principles? How are we going to work as a unit to to move the the work of the board and the district forward? And so there was just a lot of discussion amongst the the team as far as what's important to us. How do we want to operate as a collective group? And so I'll just kind of start then. Each of us can take one read it. We'll go to my left and 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 then we can have a discussion. So the the very first operating principle, which makes sense because we all are about students, all students will be at the center of decision-making.
Come to all meetings prepared and be an active participant.
Use a data-driven decision-making process that enables equitable outcomes.
Listen to, understand, respect diverse perspectives, engage in behaviors that build consensus and assume good intentions.
Coming to me, okay. Engage in critical and crucial conversations.
Utilize independent, objective judgment.
Publicly and privately support all final board decisions without undermining these decisions or the positions of individual board members, even if we disagree with the final decision.
Take no private action that will compromise the board, administration or school system.
Continue to demonstrate a growth mindset as we seek to learn, understand and develop as members of the governance team.
Can I interject really quick? That's missing from the draft, but that is on our laminated copy. I had noticed that earlier as well.
Which one is missing? What did I just write?
The growth mindset.
Growth mindset, interesting.
That's very important.
It did look shorter when I read it.
All right.
I'm just looking at this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Last bullet.
Hold each other accountable for adhering to the operating principles.
Great. All right, so, uh, Member Picard, you had questions or concerns?
Yeah, I had to, the third one, I I don't fully agree with the enables equitable outcomes. I'm more for equal opportunities. So I would have a hard time signing for that. And the other one is the publicly and privately support all final board decisions. I, there's decisions that have been made I cannot consciously support. And I mean, I have to abide by them because obviously I can't say, oh, we're not doing this. I mean, it's been decided, but I but I cannot consciously, from my beliefs, support some of those decisions. I believe some of them, a couple of them just aren't, who the people I represent who voted for me, I feel that to to support something that I disagree with would be against my purpose of being here. I would not, I agree with these, you know, I I don't think we should. I would never say anything about somebody personally like that if they agree with something. That's their choice to to agree with something. But I think in our, I mean, just our country, the way we do things, I think that everybody has a right to their decisions and what they believe. And I think that to say that I would just, you know, give that up, I I can't do that. I'm sorry.
So so why don't we, I mean, at. So so why don't we, I mean, at the end of the day, it's, this is, you know, it's voluntary, right? Ultimately, if you decide to sign it or not. But we can give a little bit more context and then you can, you know, make the best decision that 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 works for you. So I think for the the equitable outcomes, use a data-driven decision-making process that enables equitable outcomes. You know, I think from my standpoint, equal versus equitable, right? Equal means that everybody gets the exact same thing regardless. Equitable means.
Yeah.
Look, yeah. So everybody gets the exact same thing, right, regardless.
I'll hear from everybody.
Yeah. And then equitable means everybody gets what they need to be successful. So as an example, if we're going to govern from an equal standpoint, we probably wouldn't have IEPs, right? Because we would say students have to learn the exact same way and we won't make any concessions for students who maybe have a learning disability or need to take tests in a quiet place or any of that, because that's not, because we're not doing that for every student in the district, so we're not going to single out any individual students to to be able to do that. Everyone will get the exact same.
Not necessarily.
Well, no, I'm giving you the context of how we, why we pass this. So this is, what I'm giving you is the definition that the board decided on and basically what this means to this board, to this governing body, right? So that's, that's when we talk about equitable, we talk about making sure that if there's, whether it's, you know, IEPs or anything else, that a student needs to achieve their success. Kimberly Mays, I think, you know, is a great example of that. If we have homeless students or we have students that need reading glasses or, as a district, we're committed to providing those students with whatever they need individually to to succeed. Versus just saying, we are giving everything to everyone that's equal and and that's that. So, you know, board members who are here that, you know, want to add to that, once again, that's that's our definition.
So equitable occurs across that that spectrum. You have the example that you gave of the IEPs, but you have the counter example or the opposite end of the spectrum of the TAG program. The TAG program is one that provides additional opportunities for people that you must pass a score in order to be able to achieve that. And it's a function of the equitable process that we're doing there. And I think that, you know, if we were to look at the the principles that we've had as a district, it's very much around making sure that we're meeting people where they are and giving them the resources that they need to achieve their maximum potential. And that is the definition of what we've, as a board, have decided to do from an equity perspective. The other thing that I don't know whether you've you've taken the class yet for the CBA 101, because I think they speak very much to the the premise that publicly and privately supporting the final board decisions in this in this process, that it is the thing that as an elected officials, you know, disparaging decisions that were made collectively as a board is definitely something that is frowned upon in being good board governance.
Yeah, and we talked about this. So I, you know, did a little orientation for the two new board members yesterday and we walked through this. And that same question came up and, you know, once again, I explained at the time that, you know, our, we each have our our vote. And once again, one of, a lot of the, another bullet says utilize independent, objective judgment, right? So that that piece of supporting publicly and privately, it does, what we're not saying is everybody has to vote the same. That's not what we're saying. What we're saying is everybody has one vote, right? And then if something gets passed, once again, you you can vote no, but what this is saying, what we talked about is, but then you shouldn't go and undermine, right, that that decision. You shouldn't, you know, talk negatively about that decision. At the end of the day, it was a, you know, it's respecting, everybody has to respect everybody else's vote. And so we're going to respect your vote, your vote, your vote, your vote, whether it's yes or no. And and one way you do that is by not undermining the other votes and and ultimately the, you know, the the final decision of the governing body as a whole.
I guess I guess I would need your definition on undermining.
So we talked about it yesterday. We talked about if you want to, you know, if you go on social media and say, OMG, you know, I, you know, I fully disagree with this. I can't believe this is happening. And, you know, President Wilson is this, that, like, that's.
But I would also feel, because I am representing, people voted for me, that I should be able to say that this is, I disagree with this. If somebody comes to me and says, you know, that they have an issue with this and they're bothered by this decision, I'm also bothered by a decision. I can't support the decision. I can't say this is good or whatever. I mean, I think that's kind of what our freedom brings to us. And and not that I would say, oh, those terrible people, they voted, you know, I mean, that would never be the intent. The the subject matter would be the decision that was made. And how do we go about that? Because we disagree with this and we don't feel that that is a good decision, that that is going to be helpful or that that is helpful for all students. And and so there's, I could say right now some things I don't support and, which everybody knows. And so I'm not going to just say I support that because that goes against my whole conscience. It goes against what I have represented through my whole process.
But your powerful platform to disagree with that is during your vote, right? And I think the, the, you know, that's the, the process is that, I guess it just depends on where you want to.
I mean, I would never be.
I guess it depends, yeah. It just depends on where you want to put your energy, right?
So here, there's a, there's a line item here that says engage in critical and crucial conversations. So I think what you're, what I'm understanding, what I think I'm hearing from you is really belongs in that bucket. To bring those, those crucial, those perspectives, those critical conversations that you're hearing from constituents that, you know, you're bringing to the table here amongst the board for discussion. It's not necessarily consensus. It may be differing opinions. We may all have differing opinions. But as a governing body, in the end, we are one of a team of eight and and we vote and then that's, that's how we move forward. So I think, I think it's sort of both and.
Okay.
There's, so when we're taking a vote and we have a discussion, that's a time for you to say what, why you are not going to, like, say, support something. That is when you do it, not, you know, not to, you know, all the individual, like, because we make our decisions in public. And I mean, and I want to say that as somebody who has voted no on multiple things, it's never been an issue. Because at the end of the day, I want the school district to be successful. Because that means our students will be successful and I leave it here. Like, when we're done, I'll vote no and usually we'll pass and I have to let it go because the group made a decision.
And I want to add, and this is not about you as one individual person. This is a collective body that supports the school district, the students we serve, the staff, the community as a whole. So one person could disagree, like Patty's saying, and that's fine. We, you know, the critical, crucial conversation is a great point to say we want those robust discussions because we, we want to hear from different perspectives and look at different views and perspectives. At the end of the day, when a vote has been taken and the majority passes, as adults that are board members, as a team of eight, we have to support the district in the majority vote and not undermine that decision because then we are undermining the work of the district that the board passed a vote on, whatever it may be, whether it's a bond, whether it's a school bus program. We need that work to move forward because publicly, officially, the motion passed and we're done with that. So this is not, I just want to emphasize, this is not about one person individually. There are a lot of things I disagree with as a person individually. But I'm here to serve all students, the community and the staff, and I have to take that into consideration.
Yeah, and the last thing I would just say for your consideration, and once again, it's, you know, it's up to you. But the last thing I would say for consideration is, you know, you mentioned a couple of times the people who voted for you. But, you know, I've been really clear with anyone who voted for me that at the end of the day, it's about the students first. And so although I, you know, although they voted for me, they don't sit through, as a gentleman who spoke earlier, they don't sit through all of the committee meetings. They don't have the same level of depth of knowledge of of what's going on. They don't, you know, sit with the side meetings, et cetera, et cetera. So although I respect and appreciate the the vote that they provided, I I'm always very transparent and clear with them that at the end of the day, I'm going to make my vote based on the students first, not because, you know, this person or individual or group voted for me. I have to do what's in the best interest of the students and the district.
But see, but see, that's, but that is part of it for me.
Right, yeah, everybody.
The decision comes down to the students. And if there's a decision that's made that I don't believe is representing all students, then I.
You vote no.
You know.
Absolutely, yeah. And and anyone who's watched these meetings know that from time to time, we definitely don't disagree on certain things. And sometimes even a little tense, it can get a little tense with some of the conversations. But at the end of the day, my power is my one vote. And then once, once it moves forward, it moves forward and, and, you know, and we do our best, so. So with that being said, I think, you know, once again, we'll print out a new one. Everybody, yeah?
I would like to offer something just as a consideration, because we went through this in the past as a whole board. When new board members came on, you may recall, we actually go through a workshop model to talk about these things and and really get to the the basic foundation of these principles. And then we all tug, you know, we pull and push and we challenge each other in healthy ways in coming up with these norms. So I wonder if there is an opportunity where we could do that after a board meeting or before a board meeting for like, you know, half an hour, forty-five minutes with a facilitator, which we've done in the past. I do think having these conversations is really critical and to get comfortable. And if there's something that's missing, we can add that. If something needs to be tweaked, we can add that considering we have two new board members. But I'm just offering that and wondering if there is an opportunity for that sort of a facilitation.
Yeah, I mean, I I think there definitely is. I think it's a matter of, you know, we're in the middle of the school year. I think it's definitely something that, you know, we can tackle maybe going into the next school year or towards the end of this school year. Because as we all know, when we look at the board calendar for the remainder of the year, it is packed. And so, you know, I want to be conscious of that. But but, you know, in the interim, once again, whoever is comfortable, you know, to your point, everyone has to be comfortable with it or.
Along the same lines, we've had board members that have not signed. So it's, if you don't feel comfortable, you don't have to sign.
That's right.
All right, well, thank you. I appreciate all the input. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Perfect. All righty, let's see.
For clarity, do we want to, are we going to bring this back to the next meeting to sign? Or you want to, this table, let's leave this as is until you do the workshop?
So I think we present it for those who want to sign and those who don't want to sign have the option not to.
We definitely need to make sure that we've got the corrected one.
Do we rediscuss this at the beginning of each school year or is it?
That's what, that's what I'm anxious to do, so just saying we can put it on the agenda to discuss again.
Okay.
An update.
There is one other item that we talked about, just in passing, which is a community forum. I think we need to talk about putting a couple of dates or at least consider some dates for a community forum for second semester.
So we had had a conversation at FNO that we believe that there's some work that we can do from a financial education perspective on how schools are funded and not just in the community forum, but perhaps also to, in the spirit of the conversation that Ms. Doo and Ms. McCoy said, is thanking the community for their investments in the bond programs. You know, I think that we do a good job of publishing the the work that we're doing on the bond progress. But when we actually went out for the bond, we went around and we shared what the bond was going to be to a lot of different community groups. I think there's a chance for us to have a roadshow like we did for the bond and talk about what's happened with your money, how we've shared that, what are the challenges that we've had, where we saw some positive variances early in the bond. And then as supply chains and COVID took took effect, we, and inflation, we started to see negative variances that are happening. So those are all things that I think would be useful for us to do in the the way schools are funded and the way these bond programs happen and the differences between them, leading up to the budget process that we have that will be coming in. Ms. Piaz, when is the community survey that we do for the budget?
That will be in February, but to that end, since I have the mic for a sec, this Friday is the consensus revenue estimating conference. It starts the state's budget process, which then funds into our process. So this Friday, the thirteenth, hopefully it's lucky. And they will come out with, Senate and House Fiscal will both come out with a consensus of where they believe the state finances are and with the governor's office. And the executive office will come out with her budget, probably first or second week of February as a result of this Friday's CREC. And then that'll start the budget process for the state of Michigan, which then tells us what will be our funding source for our school aid fund on a going forward basis for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
So it's a chance for us to educate the community on the way education is funded, what is the potential. You know, obviously, we don't know until actually the state actually passes a budget, what we'll actually get. And that generally occurs after we have to submit our budget. But it does give us some guidance in terms of that process and allows us a chance to educate the community about what we're doing and to prepare them for providing us input into what their priorities might be or for us to consider as part of our budget process going forward. So something that we would do probably mid-February, based upon the feedback and the input that we get from the CREC and the information that comes from the budget process, a chance for us to share with the community about the successes that we've had in the capital programs, but then to contrast those against the way our operating budgets are funded.
No, I think that's fantastic. And I know there's been, we've been doing them in tandem, so will there be a second board member with you? Are you the Lone Ranger?
No, 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 no. I wasn't going to do it. I just brought the idea. Somebody else.
No, I think that you volunteer when you.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I.
Yeah, so I think it would be something we would do as part of the FNO committee is what we would do.
Be quiet, right?
Okay, perfect.
And I welcome anybody else that is interested to express that 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 interest.
I would be interested in helping with that.
Okay.
Great.
Because I love to talk about Proposal A.
Exactly. There's a lot, a lot of challenges where people don't understand the way education is actually funded. They look at their property taxes or they look at the lottery or they look at the sales tax and they say, you know, well, why are you having these challenges? And so being able to articulate and explain the way education is funded and the challenges that we have, especially with respect to the the funding levels will be important for us to to let the community know.
If I may make a suggestion, when one of the bonds passed, I don't remember which, there's been a couple that since I've been in the district. A couple of the board members went around to the PTA meeting, to the PTO meetings. And that was, so you're thinking the same thing? Because those were enormously informative and successful.
Yes.
Yeah, we did that last time.
Yeah, like I say, I can't remember.
And we went to all the little civic clubs too.
Yeah, civic clubs, the BTA, the, the, the friend.
Rotary, yeah, I mean, it was.
Rotary, the, the friendship station that they.
It was a wholesale, yeah, it was a whole.
So one of the things that we've heard from people in the community is you come to us when you want something from us. So we want to go to them and talk to them about the successes and what that work has done, rather than just about what we want from them. So to share with them what's happening and to get their input and feedback.
No, I think that's fantastic, very smart. All right, so if you provide us with the date, then I'll start to capture them and, you know, do what we were doing before. Where probably during the president's report, I'll just highlight what's coming up from a community engagement. And then also, as we all know, that was definitely a board goal that we set. So that'll help us to be able to continue towards our board goal. So thank you for kicking that off for this year. And if anybody else has any other, you know, community engagement requests or strategies, just reach out and let me know and we'll get them calendared. All right, with that, any, anything else for the, for the good of the order?
Fellow board questions?
Fellow board questions. All right, Dr. Merritt, would you like to?
Enrollment, that's still outstanding. Now, as you know, I'll be presenting for you a marketing plan. And so we'll keep that on there until that time that we have that completed. Second one was member McCoy wanted additional suspension data showing the number of days students are out of school for suspension with a breakdown by subgroups. I think we gave the number of days, but not.
But not by sub.
So that that part, I would still say keep the subgroup piece. We were looking today.
And I was looking at that data that came out today. Is that by month? Because it's, it's a chart with no, with no Y-axis label. It doesn't, there's a set of numbers, but are they the months?
No, it's total number. So what we presented on the last meeting, we presented the suspensions through November, the twenty-second, I believe. So that gave you a breakdown of every suspension by the number of days. So the number of suspensions that were a half day, number of suspensions that were a full day, two days, and then how many days. So the number of incidents by how many days and then the total days that were out, or incidents. So say, for example, you had two incidents that were point five. So say, for example, you had two incidents that were point five and then the total number of days that were out would have been one day.
I'm still confused with, with the, the chart that's there. I'm trying to find it and pull it up right now just to get.
We had a total number of suspensions. I can't remember the number. It was three hundred and ninety.
Three hundred and eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight.
Did that come today?
Yes, yes.
It came at twelve fifty-four.
The request was to know with the number of suspensions, which would be the first. Those are the number of suspensions. See the top, it says suspensions out of school.
Right, and what's, there's forty-nine, then one sixty-three.
Incidents that you saw on the chart.
But what's one sixty-three mean? What's the one below it?
So if you keep reading over, so the number of suspensions, what we gave you is work, because she wanted to know how many days. So if you had one suspension, how many, we could suspend up to ten days.
So the first column on the left, Patrick, is the, is the, is the suspension incident.
It's the length of the suspension incident.
The middle column would be the length of the suspension.
So it just.
And then the third column would be the total cumulative days.
Normally, that would be in the, the far-left column is the, the days of suspension, because that's the ordering that you've done this. But it's, as a center column, I got confused about it. So, thank you.
I took the number of incidences based on what was presented.
I understand that.
Said how many of those were half-days, full-days, three-days, five-days.
That were a half-day and we had one incident that was a ten-day.
Correct.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you.
But what is not satisfied in that request is still a breakdown by subgroup. So we'll offer that piece. I don't know if they want to adjust that, Diane, in the follow-up. We still need to.
And it's gonna take a little time to do that, because Jonathan has been looking into the system to see how to do that. And it's not as user-friendly as we would think it might be. So he's going to, he's, he's gonna be working on that work, so.
I found, I found a workaround, so I'll get with him tomorrow.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Is it, can I, can they also find out like what they did? Like what was the incident? No?
So by infraction, we have, so you wouldn't have the specifics, but there's, it's categorized. So if there's a threat versus insubordination.
Okay, that's, yeah, how many, like what would that require?
Was that in the report?
It wasn't, it was, it was, it wasn't totally broken down in that aspect, because some of that will be identifiable data. But we have access to that data.
Oh, gotcha.
We could, we could do percentages.
The third bullet, I believe, is satisfied. That was the demographic percentage of classroom staff members compared to the district student demographics. We went a little bit further and just did every, we went beyond classroom staff members. I think we provided every staff member demographics versus the student demographics.
When was that one sent?
That's in board notes on December twenty-third?
Yeah, I see December twenty-third.
The twenty-third.
And that chart is also in there.
Got it.
And so that one should be satisfied. And those are two different tabs. One tab will show the student demographics. The second tab shows the staff demographics.
Okay, I hadn't clicked through.
But the, so question about that, if you're saying all staff, does that include like custodial staff and bus drivers and all of that?
So we didn't include bus drivers. We did PCCS staff. So we did administration, support staff. I'm trying to remember.
Classroom teachers, all the teachers. So, and they're categorized by those levels, like administration, this is the, the number and percentage. Teachers, this is the classroom teachers, this is number and percentage. So it's broken down in those aspects.
And I think as we shared at that meeting, so this, you weren't here, so you wouldn't have had that information. But the actual staffing report, Mrs. Langford will be giving at the next board meeting. So we'll have an opportunity to go through that again and you'll be able to see that outside.
Okay, so we'll, we'll see that, all that information?
It'll be, she'll give a presentation about our staffing and that she'll do the demographics of our staff and that breakdown as well. I can also get that chart and share from, because you didn't have board notes, because you weren't there yet. But I could share that information with you in email as well. So pull it out of those notes if that will be helpful, just those charts.
That would be, I would appreciate that, as well as the suspension data.
Yep, so all the, all the questions that were requested, we can give that to you. So there, we just did like a link to all of that information. The fourth bullet was, acknowledge, member testing acknowledged that social emotional support data would come out at the end of the year, but ask if future data could also be broken down for Genius. So we will do that in the, that'll be an additional.
In the, yep, spring data and the beyond.
Yes. And any additional questions from the fall data, we received those. We answered the first that we received in board notes and then the final two today. So I think that those should be satisfied. Again, that first component of the second bullet that was still needing to be satisfied by subgroup. So I think that that one should be satisfied. So what I still have remaining here would be the enrollment piece and then the by-subgroups in terms of the out-of-school suspensions. The new questions from this evening, I want to make sure that we capture that.
Do we get to ask questions?
So the question I had was a detail of what we're doing with Canton Township Police outside of the park. We're very familiar with what happens with the SROs at the park, but knowing both the activities and the frequency that they're occurring in our different schools for Canton Township Police, perhaps what's happening right now and then what you see might be happening if there's some, if there's a plan to do more with that. So current state and where future state might look. Because I think that would provide a good context for us when we're evaluating and discussing what Plymouth Township might be doing.
And just for clarity, so at this point in the agenda, ultimately, we try to recapture if there was questions that were asked during, follow-up questions that were asked during the, the board meeting as a whole. And then Dr. Merritt will capture those, usually provide them in board notes to, to the board. And then ultimately, we just circle back at the end of each board meeting, as, as she just did, to say, this has been addressed. This is still outstanding. This has been addressed. This is still outstanding, so. But if you have any questions or any specific additional information, that would be the time to.
This would be done, okay. So tell me when.
No, yeah.
Oh, okay. I just had a question on the, the grant, you know, of already just, that I had talked earlier about. I had a question on that because of the different, I just found out today. So I don't know if I'm supposed to ask this before or not, but just on the, the demographic groups that's eligible for the grant. I just had concern about that, because I, I know there's proposal two of two thousand and six that would, the first one, I mean, I totally find. I just, the first one, students of color, I mean, I would be concerned that if some student who was not of color came and needed some help and didn't apply in the rest of the ones that are listed, would they also get some help? Because there are definitely students in those, in that category that would also need some help that are maybe struggling.
So Dr. Merritt, maybe you can give, yeah, context to what the question was and then clarification.
So specifically, the question was around the DEI specialist that was approved this evening. With the DEI specialist, through COVID and the unfinished learning, the federal government provided grant funding to schools to help address learning. So there's two different buckets. Funding that will address all learning, so summer school for all students. And then there are specific funds that are called eleven-T funds. And those have specific regulations from the federal government in terms of the demographic groups of students that that money can support. So as a school district, we had to come up with how we were going to utilize those funds. There are seven identified groups that we shared, and I probably won't get them all out. Students of color, McKinney-Vento students, so that, students who are experiencing homelessness, English learners, students in poverty.
Students with disabilities, migrant students, and students in foster care.
So with those seven students specifically, we had to have a plan with eleven-T funds that could support them for their learning loss. We had to, we went through a process last year where we surveyed our community to stakeholders to say, how would we want to utilize these funds? And then we built our application process to say how we would do that. And so these specialists were a part of that. We then submit that to the MDE. So for Michigan, they approve our plan and then that allows us to qualify for the grant funds. So specifically for those positions, they can only support the plan for students that qualify for eleven-T. If there is a student that does not fall within those categories, but has also, has been identified as through learning loss, in addition to the supports that we have in place for the general fund, there are also federal funds that were given through COVID to support their needs as well. And we also had to have a plan to say, how are we going to utilize those funds? So teachers on special assignments, for example, that are looking for students that may be struggling. There's high dosage tutoring for students that may qualify because they've struggled throughout the pandemic. With the federal funds, we have two years in which to utilize those funds. So we've done some as grant-funded positions, such as this position that was approved. Others, for example, are working with our own teachers to provide tutoring after school. They just can't be with their own student, but it will be a PCTCS teacher that could tutor any student who's experienced learning loss and we're able to pay that stipend through those grant funds. And so we have multiple ways in order to address learning loss, not just for a pandemic, but for students that are struggling in general from all of our demographic groups. And then in addition to that, specific guidelines for federal funds for students from eleven-T eligible positions.
Yep, and also the additional federal frees up some money from our traditional state and federal funds, like thirty-one-A funds. Thirty-one-A funds are called at-risk funding. So when you think about the ten million dollars of federal funds that came over and above to support the demographic groups, when that money shifts here, it also opens up this additional money to do additional supports beyond that. Knowing that many, many students were affected by the pandemic. So then what we do is we say, okay, so this pot of money serves this population of students. This pot of money now gets a little freer to serve up more students. And it, it allows us to serve more students more effectively for the course of the time we have this money. It's also why we're doing a lot of data and metrics around if, you know, we use the TOSSAs, for example. As we look at the TOSA program, Teacher on Special Assignment Program, as we look at the data, we determine, are the implementations, are the interventions we're putting in place working? If they are, ultimately, two years from now, year and a half from now, now, when that funding cliff comes, we have to make some decisions about what are those programs that we need to continue? And in order to continue them, there may be some things that we need to shift funding away from. So that's all of the work that we're doing over the course of the next year and a half now. And looking at, okay, these are working well. These are things that would be nice to haves and here's the things that we know just based on data are not as effective as other things. So when you only have so much money, we have to determine, why are we using that money? So that, what, but what it does right now is it frees us up to be able to serve more students more effectively during this timeframe.
Okay, and I understand, I just, the legality part of it is what I'm worried about, because the proposal two says the state shall not discriminate against or grant peripheral treatment to any, to any individual or group on the basis of race, sex, color, ethnicity, or national origin in the operation of public employment, public education, or public contracting. So I just, by, by, the first one, you know, making a statement of basically, I guess it would be race, it just seems like that kind of pulls that whole thing into the direction that would be under protected.
So the question is, are we violating that, right?
Yeah, I guess that's what I.
And just to be clear, though, just to be clear, it was seven, right, seven. So it wasn't just race, it was also disability, et cetera, et cetera, right? So, but, but are we, are we violating?
The answer to that question is no, we're not. Because what we're talking about is additional services over and above, not basic services. When you look at like section two, we're talking about basic services. What that would say is, I come into the door and you say to me, oh, because you're an Caucasian woman who is currently not living in poverty, you can't attend our schools. That's a violation of, of the law, right? When we look at discriminating against people for any of those, any reason in those aspects. Public schools accept all. We serve all students. And so there are funds that are used that provide opportunities, and I don't know if that clicked off, over and above basic services. So an example might be McKinney-Vento Services is a great example. There is a special funding pot of money, federal funds, for what are called McKinney-Vento Services. McKinney-Vento Services are for students who experience homelessness. Without those additional services, and I'll give you a great example. A student may be attending school in Plymouth-Canton Community Schools. The family becomes homeless. They may have to double up in a home in Detroit or Bloomfield Hills or Grand Rapids or wherever. If it is in the best interest of the student to continue to attend Plymouth-Canton Community Schools, we transport that student. And regardless of how far we transport that student. Now, we're not sending a school bus all around the state, so we have to figure out ways to do that. Without those additional fundings from the state and federal government, that can bankrupt the system. So we don't provide that for all students, because all students don't need that service. Same thing with students who are free and reduced lunch eligible. We don't provide, except in times like the pandemic, when federal funds opened up to do that, we don't provide free lunch for everybody, because not everybody needs that service. That's called equity. If it were equal, we would do all those things for everyone, which would mean that we actually couldn't do all of the services that we do. To Patrick, to a member Kehoe's example about tag, we wouldn't provide tag services if we did equal services for all students, because then either all students would get it or no students would get it.
Well, I think when I talk about equal, I think of equal opportunity. So, so students equally have the opportunity to apply for tag. Tag programs there, not that every student will get in there, so it won't technically be equal, but they'll have the opportunity. These opportunities are out there. They equally have a chance. So if you work your can off or you just somehow were born with some extra whatever, you may make it into the tag. You may make it in the tag and choose not to be in the tag, but it just gives you that extra opportunity. Your outcome will be different. It won't be equitable outcome. I mean, it, it will be however you, just I have four, after four children, I just have totally, they all had the same opportunity at school. They all had the opportunity to participate in everything that was available, but they did not choose all the same things and they did not come out all the same.
So you, you've actually given the quintessential example of equal versus equitable. Because your students all had the same opportunity, that's equality, equal, but they chose different paths based on their needs. That's equitable.
Well, it wasn't, it was choices, wasn't even just what they, it was just their desire, what they wanted to accomplish.
Because some students, for example, who go into the STEM Academy, maybe want a career pathway in the biomedical field where another student who wants to go into the arts academy is looking for a career that they're passionate about in arts.
Right.
Our automotive, auto body and repair, our auto design, our auto, our auto programming, who right now, by the way, are working on EVs. So we may get some really, well, will be, we're doing some trainings, we've got some cool stuff happening. If we provided, if we said every student has to have the same thing, we wouldn't provide any of those opportunities, because if we said every student has to be in, in the auto body program, we couldn't provide that for every student. We couldn't put six thousand kids in auto body, so therefore we would put none. And that is the quintessential example.
If we go back, just to the, to the question though of funding.
Correct.
For teaching and learning, we assess what all students need in terms of if there's learning loss or they're struggling. And so then it's about how do we provide that support? And this is around what funding can we use to do it? So if we say tutoring is something that is needed, and so it might be something that's a general fund support at tutoring. So the tutoring will be provided for any student that needs it. How we're able to pay for that, that tutoring could be different, is it different? So this is grant-funded, that's only specific. And then if there's another student that doesn't qualify based on the eleven-T, but that student needs tutoring, then that could be supported through the general fund or through additional funding.
So this, let me just interject. So this would be my recommendation, because, you know, once again, we, we want to make sure that we keep board meetings to the focus of the business of the board. I feel like what we're getting into now is really a workshop. And I think, you know, if you'd like to recommend a workshop, then what we're able to do is literally set aside time to where we can get into equal versus equitable. Because to me, the, the most important, everybody, you know, we surveyed this entire room and said, what's your definition of equal versus equitable? You'll, you'll get all different questions, I mean, all different answers. But it's important that we align collectively. And I think what you're hearing is there is a collective definition of the district of what equal is versus equitable. And honestly, through your remarks, you're aligning with equitable, because yes, everyone should have an equal opportunity at baseline, but then everyone should also. should have an equal opportunity baseline, but then everyone should also have what they need, because we're all individuals, no one student learns the exact same way, right? But, but once again, I, because otherwise, we'll.
But the outcome part, outcome and opportunity is what's the different part for me.
Yeah, so, so.
So we can't have equitable outcomes, it's opportunities.
So once again, I'd recommend you, you know, if you want to do a, a workshop to get a deeper understanding, because the, the big thing on that is, as we receive funding from grants, as we apply for grants, grants ultimately, they say, this is what you can apply for, and, you know, for this grant. And then ultimately, once you receive those grants, you can only spend the money on those, those items, otherwise, you're not in compliance, and there could be legal ramifications, right?
So, so my question really is to the state, that they would have this grant, and the way they set it up, is where, who would be the one responsible, and where they would be the one that were not under the legal, under the proposal.
Federal.
That would be their legal problem.
It's a federal grant.
The grant, right. Well, federal, that could also be unconstitutional, so.
But you have to understand, too, is, if a student is funded out of that grant for those specific purposes, it frees up money for.
I understand that.
Another, you know, from another bucket.
It's the principal matter of it.
Once, once again, I do want to, yeah, I do want to move us along, because otherwise, we'll, we'll be here till, till wee hours of the morning, which I know you guys would like to do, but. So, so once again, you know, full transparency, if you ever want to, if this is something that you want to take up in a workshop, or if this is something that you want to, you know, make a community, you know, forum, email myself, you know, Dr. Merritt, Superintendent Merritt, and that's something that we can, because I do think it's very important that the community is educated, right? And educated on when we say something, otherwise, there's misperception. If someone reads a word, but you don't get the, the background of what the district means when it says this word, then, yeah, everyone can pretty much run wild with whatever they think that that word means. And so, so I think we'd all welcome the opportunity to, to educate based on what, you know, what we've talked about as a group. Any other questions?
I have a question, I just have a comment.
Sure.
Because I didn't get a lot of play because of the break. But the PCCS learner profile videos are up on the YouTube channel?
Nice.
They're very nice. Lots of students.
Actually, talking about PCCS students, aren't our students doing something for MLK Day?
Actually, yes, participating. You have information, Mr. Brendan Scher.
Yeah, I encourage everyone to visit pccsk12.com. We have a full announcement of the two events. There's a morning event and an evening event, both take place in Canton Township, both involve students. In the evening event, we have PCCS students that are performing as part of the MLK Day celebration. So it's really exciting, glad you brought it up, and we encourage everyone to get all the, including kind of a full timeline of the day at pccsk12.com. Thank you for plugging the learner profile videos as well. We welcome people to check those out at the PCCS official YouTube channel.
You get an extra sweatshirt for that. All right, with that, we will go ahead and officially adjourn 9:31 PM.